Good afternoon. It's four thirty P M. On Tuesday, November twenty first, two thousand twenty-three. We will call the City Council meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. At this time, item number one is our consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer motion to approve those.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two, point one, gambling permit for Church of Saint Mary.
A motion to approve the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the Church of Saint Mary to conduct raffling gambling at Church of Saint Mary, four seventeen South Minnesota Street on Friday, February second, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number two point two, pull tabs and raffles gambling permit for New Ulm Area Catholic Schools.
I'll offer motion to approve the issuance lawful gambling permit for the New Ulm Area Catholic Schools to conduct pull tabs and raffle gambling at the Franklin Downtown, one twenty-sixth North Minnesota Street on Friday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, and a second, second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to reports from counselors, three point one, summary business conducted during board and commission meetings.
I can start on this end. Um, we had E D A meeting last week and did agree to sell the property at three hundred block of North Broadway. Um, so we've asked our city manager and finance director to um prepare those documents, so that sale will go through. Westridge Place is close to opening up. Um, three out of four of the pods will open up in December, and the other one will open up in January, so we're excited to get that up and running as well. So, and then Highway fourteen opened, but I was not in the cold, and other people were, so I'll, I'll pass that on.
Okay.
All right. Heritage Preservation met last night. Uh, we did approve one awning for the south side of the old Retzoff Building. That is the Gypsy Girl. Uh, no, I do not know what the retail thing is. It's just named Gypsy Girl. Uh, we also had a preliminary discussion on a gentleman by the name of Steve Braun is going to propose to the city in New Ulm, the Cemetery and Monuments Commission, uh, a big plaque on a past building that was located between, right behind the chamber and the laundromat and between our parking lot. Uh, apparently it used to be what was called the New Ulm Post for seventy years. So they're just working on it now, preliminary. It'll go through all the steps, and eventually it'll come to us for approval. And then, uh, Park and Rec, we also met, uh, will be, will be accepting a grant and donations later. Uh, one of the bigger items was, uh, one of their first workshops was held on the Pollinator Park. I believe you all read what was in the journal. That will also be coming back to the Park and Rec and the council for further approval. That's it.
Excellent.
Uh, from Sister City Commission, we're going to be looking for, uh, individuals from eighteen to thirty-five that are interested in being the two thousand twenty-four exchange students. We're taking those applications through the month of December.
And nothing new to report from Solid Waste Commission and, uh, from Transportation Commission. I just wanted to commend the Journal for a nice article that they did on the Ubers and Lifts in New Ulm last week, that it was, I think, a well, well-told story of what's going on and, and the need and want for it in the community. So, thank you, Journal.
Thank you. Um, I, well, well, go ahead, Mayor, and then I'll, if you have anything.
Well, I was at the E D A meeting and also Sister Cities, so concur with what was already reported. I did have the opportunity to attend the National League of Cities Convention. It was excellent. Um, Andrea and, um, Chris, the city manager, were also in attendance. Just so much to, to learn and to, to engage in as far as, um, opportunities. Uh, I think that if we were to measure ourselves against the thirty-five hundred people that were there, the three of us represent one of the finer cities as far as, um, when I was look, attended a session as an example on reuse of existing buildings and repurposing them, uh, we're doing that. Um, as far as looking at, at planning and partnerships in the community, uh, I checked that one off. Uh, visiting with people from Minnesota at the reception for the Minnesota representation, uh, people seem to know where New Ulm was or is as opposed to maybe me knowing where some of the people, the communities are that some of the other people in the room were. So it was a, a great opportunity for me to learn and to develop some new relationships on behalf of the city.
Yes, I would concur. Um, had a great time at N L C, was very pleased with the, with the timely content, um, and breakout sessions that were offered, um, and had a great time. Yes, it was, um, again, I don't know, I just echo what you said, that we know that we're doing well as a city, that we are checking those boxes, um, through partnerships, through communication, um, through community education and, um, through development. So, yeah. Chris, anything to add?
I would kind of echo the same things, and, and looking at it, I would say a lot of things that we're doing specifically, you know, with downtown and things that are happening, um, you know, when you look at downtown now to where it was five years ago, it is vibrant, it is turning around. We do have less empty storefronts. So one of the things, um, that resonated was someone asked a question, is what do you do when you hit a plateau? Because again, we don't have any, that many empty storefronts. We're doing what we can to fill those. Um, we have the entertainment piece and the attraction piece through stuff that the Chamber and Uber is doing with the events, um, you know, and so our next step really is what's going to happen with the mall in Georges. And once that brings that housing piece and some of that mixed use, we're going to have to ask the question at that point, what is the why? Why have we hit that plateau? What is that next step that we have to do? And that's going to be more of a data-driven answer than a physical, I can see what the issue is. Um, and so I would say we're ahead of the curve compared to almost every other city in that room that was at downtown revitalization, and that was a packed room for a Saturday morning, um, that we have the problems that other larger cities are now facing with their downtowns, and it's, it's a good spot to be in. So.
Um, and just to add to the why and the plateau, uh, the mayor, um, Chris, and I, and others, um, attended the opening of the Highway fourteen corridor between Nicolet, New Ulm this morning and Cortland. Um, and that, um, just looking at the opportunity that having that open will bring to our community is something that is worth.
So you open for twenty minutes, right?
Yeah, so officially, when we were driving on it today, there were still a lot of cones and some cleanup and last-minute things going on. But yes, I was told that we're on par for a five o'clock opening tonight. Um, but that just means so much for our community, you know, given all the manufacturing, giving all the transportation that we have here. Um, and so we're looking forward to seeing what kind of avenues we can explore and that that will bring for us as well.
I know for years, our industrial folks were, were always talking about, um, needing a four lane for, just for more trucking and being able to ship things in and out of this community, and we have a lot of trucking business, and I know they got to be just really excited about five o'clock today.
Yep.
And people coming into our community as well, so.
Well, and one of the things that resonated throughout the different speeches, and I think there were about eight or nine people that presented today at the ribbon cutting, uh, but the one thing that they all shared, uh, that we feel like we've accomplished is a safer roadway.
Yes.
Between Rochester and New Ulm, and that, that was the single thing that resonated throughout the, the speeches. I was just wondering if, if, um, Chris, our city manager, um, didn't mention that he participated in one of the, um, workshops at the national level, and if he want to share a couple pieces of information from that experience?
Uh, yeah, that was, it was a community place building, um, workshop, and, uh, I was randomly pulled to participate. We were headed into the exhibit hall, and then N L C staff member comes running up saying, we need you to participate in a session. I was like, okay, cool. Um, and as we're walking, I'm like, okay, what do I have to talk about so I can mentally prepare for this? I'm like, ah, don't worry about it. You're going to be playing this board game, and you're going to talk about, you know, designing a city, uh, planning a city, and, and, you know, speak about how you came to certain decisions. Um, and it was a really good exercise, uh, a really good board game that, you know, I think, um, if, if we can bring that here to, you know, a community event so people can see how, as a, as an individual, you place things. I want to live next to these things. These are things I don't want to live next to. Then you got a larger board where you would place your name, and then you would place the two things that, um, were closest to you, next to you, and then pull additional pieces, and then the two things that you didn't want next to your house, you had to place three tiles away from you. And my neighbor next to me, I said, I am sorry, I am placing a drug treatment facility right next to your neighborhood, because I had no other place to put it on the board. So then it brings up the conversations, well, why would you do that? And you talk about it, and then you come up with values, and then you move to a larger board, um, and actually plan an entire city based on the values and stuff like that, and you plan that. And then it's all timed, so it's, everyone's frantically rushing to get pieces and everything. Um, and then, so what the conversation was is, how did you plan this? What do you feel you missed after this time limit, you know, and, and everyone was saying different things? And why did you choose to put things in certain places? Um, and, you know, we were able to answer, um, you know, I was able to answer some of the audience's questions. Um, you know, a town of fourteen thousand was built out, so how do they use this, you know, for community engagement and to show? And I think it was a very good, um, very good game, you know, specifically for, I would say, middle school kids and high school kids to see how that planning process works, and that you always, you don't always get to dictate where stuff goes based on availability of land and things like that. So it was a good experience.
Interesting, yeah.
Yes, very good. Well, thank you, everyone. Um, we are moving on to, uh, section four, uh, reports from officers, boards, and commissions. Item number four point one is, uh, City Engineers' Report for Proposed Two Thousand Twenty Four Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Stotheim.
Right. Thank you, Madam President, um, Madam Mayor and City Counselors. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on the proposed Two Thousand Twenty Four C I P and Engineers' Report. Uh, just a quick, uh, look at the agenda. We'll briefly look at our recent reconstruction history, our current distribution of pavement conditions, and the proposed, uh, projects coming up for two thousand twenty-four, and then, um, look at the five-year list as well. So, uh, in section one of the report, we start with program history. Uh, looking back in two thousand and eight, we had twenty-nine miles of failed roadways, and now in, um, going into two thousand twenty-four, we brought that number down to seven point seven-five miles. Uh, the chart shown on, on the slide here, uh, just shows the approximate number of miles reconstructed each year and the approximate dollar value, um, of those improvements. So around, uh, three point six-four million dollars of improvements per year. So here is taking that data and putting it into, just into a line graph to show our distribution of pavement conditions. So green is our, our good roadways, yellow is our, our marginal, and red is our failed sections. So again, we have seven point seven-five failed roadway miles, so that's about eight point eight percent. Nineteen point three three marginal miles, that's about twenty-two percent, and almost sixty-one percent of adequate roadways, so sixty-nine, uh, point two percent. Um, you'll notice from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four, there's been pretty drastic increase, and a lot of that is due to the Brown County Kasah Highway miles within the New Ulm city limits, um, and the county doing improvements to former Boundary Street or North Island Avenue, and along with Kasah twenty-six or Tensell Street. So that drastic jump, uh, is associated to those projects, uh, by the county. So here's a, uh, mapped version of that distribution curve. So this map is from two thousand and ten, um, showing the distribution of, of the pavement condition. Lots of red, not a lot of green. But now we look at the two thousand twenty-four map, we're drastically different. So, um, it shows the improvements that have been made in the last handful of years and how that's changed the pavement condition. Um, in a similar fashion, uh, look at the alley pavement conditions as well. Um, in total, we have two hundred and thirty-three paved alley segments within the city. Sixty-seven of those are failed, hundred and seven are marginal, and fifty-nine of those are adequate. So, um, kind, more of a, kind of equal distribution of those pavement conditions in the alley segments. And again, the map will reflect that with, uh, lots of, or with lots of green, yellows, and reds. There's no dominant color in that map. Next slide just shows the pavement conditions put together. So that's, this map is the streets and alleys together. So that's where, where we're at now, and, um, in development of the two thousand twenty-four C I P, a number of items that we look at, um, pavement condition, uh, how's curb and gutter, what utility needs do we need, uh, to improve and A D A improvements. Uh, so in conjunction with the complete streets policy that was adopted on June fourth in two thousand nineteen, um, we start looking at those improvements. Uh, we bring those improvements to the Safety Commission, and they recommended that, uh, that the project, uh, be approved in terms of the proposed projects meeting the city's complete streets policy. Uh, the commission considered that at their September meeting. We conducted public outreach on the proposed improvements, um, which I will go into detail, uh, in the next couple of slides, the two thousand twenty-four M S A S improvement project. Uh, that public open house was September of two thousand twenty-two, and, uh, council ordered that improvement in, uh, September of twenty-three, and the USA Public Open House was on September twenty-seventh. So here's a quick look at the two thousand twenty, the proposed two thousand twenty-four utility street and alley improvement project. Um, highlights of this project include German Street from Center Street to Third North Street, um, three alley segments, some A D A improvements, and then, uh, three, uh, reconstruction, roadway reconstruction projects. As you can see, the estimated project costs and the special, uh, estimated special assessments. So I'll just touch on sections three and seven of the report. Uh, the methodology for assessments is in section six of the report, which is the same as in previous years. The roadway reconstruction assessment policy is based on City Resolutions eighty-eight fifty and ninety thirty-five. Uh, reconstruction should be assessed at sixty percent, uh, of the reconstruction cost on a per parcel basis for each buildable residential parcel, and an incremental benefit assigned to non-residential parcels. I am recommending the two thousand twenty-four parcel unit rate be set at four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The surface reconstruction rate be set at two thousand one hundred and forty dollars, and the full depth reclamation rate be set at three thousand ninety dollars. Utility improvements are not assessed to benefiting property owners, as those, uh, fees on the, um, the P U C infrastructure fees on the utility bills are used to pay for those improvements on utility reconstruction projects, and alleys are typically assessed at one hundred percent, um, to the adjacent parcels. So jumping to the two thousand twenty-four M S A S improvement project, that is twentieth South Street from the Broadway to the Minnesota River Bridge, uh, this project includes about two million dollars in federal funding and one point seven million in, uh, municipal state aid funding as well. So there you can see the estimated project costs of just over five million dollars with about a hundred and fifty thousand in special assessments. The two thousand twenty-four Mindot Project, uh, which is another project we, we've been waiting for, for quite a while, um, here in New Ulm, is the roundabout construction at Highway fourteen and North Island Avenue. Uh, that includes about one point seven million dollars in Mindot funding. Um, the city applied for highway safety improvement funding, um, and received that funding to the tune of about five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and the remaining, um, city portion of that would be funded with M S A S funding as well. So, in short, no direct local funding will be needed for that, local share on that project. Uh, surface reconstruction project, uh, ten blocks are being proposed for surface reconstruction by the city's street department personnel. Um, we collaborated with the street department to develop this list and, um, went through a couple of iterations to come up with the proposed improvements for two thousand twenty-four. Two thousand twenty-four recreational trail project would be from twentieth South Street to seventh South Street, would be a mill and repave of the existing, um, recreational trail. Um, this includes two hundred and ten thousand dollars in state funding through a D and R Trails Grant, and we are working through the environmental review process to receive that Trails Grant. Um, again, this project would be dependent on us, um, getting, getting the funds from that grant. So we've been tentatively awarded the funds. We just got to work through the environmental process. We're almost done on that. Uh, two thousand twenty-four, uh, storm sewer improvement projects. Uh, just start this one by saying this is a pending project that is dependent on, um, congressionally-directed spending funding. Um, we've been notified by Senator Smith and Klobuchar's offices that we've been allocated one point, uh, oh seven five million dollars in funding for this project through the FEMA process, and this would be for a lift station at eighteenth South Street and the, uh, Minnesota Ri- River Levy. So it would take place of city's street crews setting up pumps and pumping during flooding events when we have to close the floodgates. Again, um, dependent on, um, the legislator getting together and signing this into law. So, but it has been earmarked for us, so we're just fingers crossed to get signed and, uh, those funds get directed to us. Two thousand twenty-four airport improvement projects, a number of projects proposed at the airport this next summer. Um, the first one on the list is the automated, uh, weather observation system. Um, that would be site work and engineering, expanding the terminal apron area and extending some taxi lane pavement for potential private development at the airport. Um, also, we have been, again, with the congressionally-directed spending. We are hopeful that we will receive the funding that's been allocated for our new crosswind runway at the airport, and if that funding is awarded to us, we would start, uh, land acquisition for proposed, uh, crosswind runway nine two seven. And finally, two thousand twenty-four would be the tree planting project, and that would just replant, uh, various trees that we need to take out for the two thousand twenty-four construction projects. So putting that into a graphic so you can look at, um, here's the map of the proposed projects, um, at various locations within the city. So I apologize for how busy this slide is, but it's the only way I could get all the information on it. So, um, this is a summary of the estimated project costs, estimated assessments, and dedicated funding sources. Uh, I, most interest on this side, slide should be on the dedicated funding sources. Um, you can see the, um, P U C funding that comes for the utilities, but in that, there's a bunch of federal M S A S funding and that can, um, congressionally-directed spending as well. So of the fourteen million dollars worth of improvements, almost eleven million of that is included with, um, spending that's been allocated, uh, for those projects. And taking that one step further to calculate our bonding need, um, our girls bonding need comes into about, about three point four million dollars, and our special assessment percentage is shown at that twenty-two percent, twenty percent minimum, so we can bond for these improvements. So with that, um, in section four of the report, I touch on the feasibility of this project. So it's with all this information that's been presented that I believe these improvements are necessary, feasible, and are grouped to enhance constructability, provides a cost-effective capital improvement plan, uh, as outlined in section five of the report. So I'll jump just very quickly, go through the projected five-year listings. So two thousand twenty-five, some notable projects would be Bridge Street from Cottonwood Street to Tower Road, and, uh, roadway improvements out in Lakeside Village Edition. Um, we have railroad crossing improvements at sixteen South Street, and then, um, surface reconstruction and airport projects as well. And there's that map showing those project locations. Two thousand twenty-six, uh, projects of note include State Street from twelfth North Street to sixteenth North Street, adjacent to the fairgrounds, and then continuing the German Street corridor. So we'd be going from Center Street to third South Street, um, in twenty-six. I'm hopeful to apply for another D and R Trails Grants and continue the Trail Reconstruction Project in two thousand twenty-six as well. Uh, again, surface reconstruction and airport, uh, projects, uh, continue as well. And there is a map, given graphic of those proposed project locations. Two thousand twenty-seven, uh, projects of note include Franklin Street from fifth North Street to twelfth North Street. Um, M S A S project in two thousand twenty-seven, we've been allocated federal funding, uh, for that stretch on Garden Street from Center Street to fifth North Street, uh, complete roadway reconstruct, um, some utility reconstruction, and potentially, we are looking at the feasibility of a mini roundabout at Center, or, excuse me, at Garden Street and fifth North Street. Um, so that comes in with a price tag of five point six million dollars. Um, I will be reapplying for more federal funds to help offset that cost in two thousand twenty-seven as well. There's the graphic of that. And then finally, in two thousand twenty-eight, again, continuing German Street from third South to seventh South Street. Um, as a placeholder, I am including, uh, M S A S project that, that would include a roundabout construction at Center and Garden, uh, along with the corridor up to Payne Street. Just as a placeholder, I haven't applied for nor received any funds for that project yet, but I want to keep it in the plan, so, uh, it's there, not that we, um, forget. yet, but I want to keep it in the plan, so it's there, not that we forget about it or remove it in any means. Again, more trail reconstruction, grant dependent, and airport surface reconstruction project. And there's the graphic showing those improvements, and this graphic does a little better job of bringing that five-year plan together so you can see all the various locations shown. And then in summary, the five-year CIP is about $56 million. So as you can see, the estimated project costs are shown with the summation at the bottom. So that concludes my presentation. Again, the report has much more detail than what I went through today. Includes all the other various locations that are being proposed for consideration. So at this time, if there's any questions or discussion, I'd be happy to attempt to answer them right now.
Joe, I've got one in regards to Crosswind Runway. What direction are we looking at for the future?
That would be more of a true east-west alignment. So it'd be, it's being proposed to be located on some property lines to minimize the amount of property acquisition that would be needed, but 15, 33 alignments, kind of at that northwest-to-southeast alignment, and the crosswind would be almost at a true east-west alignment.
Okay.
This is 44 pages of really detailed, good information, so my compliments to you and to your staff in putting this proposal together. Good job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
And not hearing any comments, I'll offer a motion to adopt the Proposed 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stotheim.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Item number 5.1, Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-077, Chapter 5 Liquor Licensing and Regulation.
I'll offer a motion to have the second consideration adoption of ordinance number 2023-077, amending Chapter 5, Section 5.33 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to liquor licensing regulation of the City of New Ulm Code to amend Sunday hours for liquor sales to begin selling alcohol at 8:00 a.m. on Sundays instead of 10:00 a.m.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Again, Nicole, this was just to bring in compliance with the state law. Right, thank you. Okay, those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.2, Ordinance Number 2023-078, Second Consideration on the Schedule of Fees.
Councilors, there have been no changes since that first reading a couple weeks ago, so unless you have any other questions, I would just look for the adoption of the ordinance.
I thought those numbers looked fair, so I'll make a motion to conduct the second consideration of ordinance number 2023-078, amending Section 2.99 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to the schedule of city fees.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That does carry. Under New Business, Item 6.1, City Council Appointments for January 2024 Annual Meeting.
Councilors, this is just basically a list of all the different commissions and groups that you participate in. The biggest one of note on there would be the two airport positions that would be, technically, both of them could continue if they wanted to do another first full term. Both of them were doing partial terms, and I believe one of them was Andrea's appointment, and I can't remember who the other one was.
One was mine.
Larry, yep.
Ward 4.
But that's just for that first meeting in January, so this is just kind of a heads-up that those things are there.
Start looking.
Mm-hmm. We can do that.
Start asking.
I'll offer a motion to receive and order file the report from the Finance Director regarding appointments to be made by city council at the annual city council meeting on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.2, City Attorney Legal Services Rate Increase for 2024.
Council President, Councilors, before you have the updated rate for criminal, for legal services, it's up about, a little over, about $800. And again, this is very much down from when we were doing the hourly service, and so the retainer has been working out. I know that the police chief is here, and he, you know, states that he enjoys working with them, and they do a very good job. So this, you know, $800 is not a huge thing, and we do need the legal services.
Do they have any interest or any, was there any discussion about a two- or three-year contract?
We can look at, that's something we can look at. This is something that we just started last year with the retainer because we had that hourly rate, and that was way out of control that first year, because they weren't sure how much work they had to transfer over. So this is something this year we can work with them to see, to work that out.
I'd like to see that, to lock them in, because we don't have a lot of options, and it'd be nice, and they're doing a good job. I don't, I've not heard any complaints myself.
So I'll go ahead and offer a motion to approve Flattery and Hood, City Attorney Legal Services hourly rate scheduled for the calendar year 2024, and the monthly retainer for criminal prosecution, services of $8,867.04 per month effective January 1st, 2024.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.3, Assignment of Fire Department Officers.
I'll motion to approve the assignment of the following fire department officers for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2024. First Assistant Chief, Aaron Wilford; Second Assistant Chief, Nathan Osborne; and the Fire Marshal, Trent Oble.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number 6.4, Ward Apparatus Contract Change Order, 2237028-1 for the rescue truck. Chief, good evening.
President Betker and Councilors, these are the changes that were made in the preconstruction meeting in September. If you noticed, the amount is $5,600, which is pretty small considering the size of the project. There were a few things added, a few things taken out, and that's where the total came out to be. When we were at the preconstruction meeting, they're hoping for a delivery of the truck sometime next fall, so.
Thank you, Chief. These things take a while.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Ward Apparatus Contract Change Order Number 237028-1 for the rescue truck in the amount of $5,640.06.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.5, U.S. Tennis Association Grant, Mr. Shugel.
Thank you, Council President Betker and City Councilors. Here tonight with you to ask for acceptance of a U.S. Tennis Association grant in the amount of $1,500. Please know that this grant has been applied for and received. It was, they have these mini grants that have pretty quick turnarounds, and in working with our local New Ulm Tennis Association, identified that this was an option for us to start youth tennis, which we haven't had in a very long time. I don't know if we've ever had it indoors. So this would be an indoor winter program. I will tell you, the program's been advertised already and has already had enough registrations to run the program.
Excellent.
So nice option for the winter months at the rec center.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Shugel.
I'll offer the resolution, accepting a grant from the U.S. Tennis Association in the amount of $1,500 for the purposes of starting a youth tennis program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Betker.
Motion does carry. Item number 6.6, Park and Recreation Donations.
Thank you, President Betker, City Councilors. Tonight, asking again for acceptance on donations in the amount of $6,635.81, and those break out to be $1,260 for the Rec on the Go program from ISD 88. This is the other 20%. They've already given us 80% of that to run that program throughout more than just the summer months now. Two donations from the New Ulm Baseball Association for various facility improvements at Johnson and Miller Parks. And then German Park Paver Stones on behalf, from Marlis Wilford honoring Bill and Mark Wilford in the amount of $400. And thank you to all those donors, organizations, and individuals who donated those funds.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shugel.
One comment, I really do like that, and I enjoy that, Mr. Shugel. You continue to always read the donations, so I don't have to.
That's a rule for all. That's a new rule.
Yeah, new rule.
I'll offer the resolution to accept donations offered to the city in Ulm through the Park and Rec Department as outlined.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Betker.
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. Item number 6.7, Police Department Donations.
I'll offer a resolution to accept a monetary donation on a $500 from Minnesota South Central Investigators Coalition to be used to support the Shop with a Hero program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Betker.
Yes, that motion does carry. All right, at this, okay, at this time, we will be not adjourning this meeting, but moving into a closed session that will take place after the work session. The new Ulm City Council will go into a closed session to evaluate the performance of city manager Chris Dalton according to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A and 13D.01 subdivision 3. We will move into-
Adjourn to the closed-
We will adjourn to the closed session-
Following the work-
Following the work session that will begin-
Now.
Now?
No.
Everybody's looking at you. Everyone's looking at you. That will begin now. So, thank you. So at this time, we will, we are going to just take a very short break, just for our IT folks to get done what they need to do, and then we will go right into the, to the work session. We have one item on that session.